Good evening and welcome to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting. This is the regular business meeting for Tuesday, June 11th, 2024. The time right now is 7:00 PM. I'm going to ask that Clerk Wykoff please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members present in establishing a quorum are Council members Foulter, Beaumont, Hamford, Walker, Fisher, and Scarborough.
Thank you. And I received a phone call earlier this evening from Councilmember Gamble. He's not able to make it here this evening, so unless there is objection, we'll consider his absence as excused. Seeing no objection, we'll proceed. Councilmember Foulter, will you please lead us in the pledge?
I approach the United States of America and to your power, we are just fans of one nation and one God, being visible with the true Jesus Christ.
Thank you. First item that we have on the agenda this evening is public comments. Do we have anybody who signed up to speak this evening? Is there anybody that wanted to provide public comments, general public comments for this evening? This would not be in relation to the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move forward. The next item that we have on the agenda is under announcements and presentations. This is item 5.1, sports tourism in Snohomish County with Tammy Dunn from the Snohomish County Sports Commission. Good evening, how are you? Good. You're going to bring the microphone out, Tammy, and I'm going to ask you to do a little dance?
I was ready to stand.
Yeah.
Good evening, council members and Mayor Thomas. Thank you for the opportunity to come to speak to you tonight about sports tourism in Snohomish County. I like to say it's probably been about six years since I've been out here to Monroe to present to the council. Tonight, I'm going to talk about sports tourism, give you some economic impact on a national level, who the sports commission is, also the impact of sports tourism in Snohomish County as well as in the city of Monroe, and then talk a little bit about 23, 24 events that are happening in Monroe specifically. Next slide, please. I like to start with the impact of tourism and how important it is because people are coming in and they're the travelers, they're coming in by plane, by bus, by car, and they stay in our communities by campgrounds, lodging, and they go to sports arenas, they go to food places, and they shop as well. What that does is it really brings in sales, employment, wages, and taxes into our community, taxes for the city, for their general fund, wages for our residents who live here, and then more sales for the business owners that work here as well. Next slide, please. Sports tourism is a driver of U.S. economy. These numbers are from Sports Events Tourism Association, a survey report, industry report that was done in 2023. And I noticed that I have, actually, I'm going to say these are 2021 numbers. So 2021, the industry report was $39.7 billion. And in '23, I'll show you the impact, is that in '23 is $52.2 billion, and that's sports-related travel spending. So it's a huge increase over two years. The total economic impact in '21 was $91.8 billion, and in '23 it was $128 billion. Total jobs generated was 635,000. These are full-time and part-time nationwide, and that's '21. In '23, were almost 758,000 people, full-time and part-time. And then the total taxes generated in '21, it was $29.00 billion, and in '23 with the survey, it was $20.1 billion in taxes, and such a huge increase specifically after the pandemic. And you can see that how sports tourism is really a driver for our economy. Next slide, please. Who is the Snohomish County Sports Commission? We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit sports destination management organization. We are a standalone sports commission. We are no longer part or part of a division of a convention and visitor bureau or a tourism bureau. So in January 2020, the sports commission, we became our standalone, our own separate organization, continue to do with what we did prior to 2019. We still do it today in generating room nights, economic impact, and doing good for the community. Next slide, please. We do have a board of directors. We have nine, and our vision statement is to become the premier destination in the region for sports, enriching the community, and increasing economic vitality through sports. Next slide, please. So what do we do? We retain and retain, recruit, retain, and facilitate sporting events in Snohomish County. So we're constantly bringing in new events such as World Wake Association, Wake Board, and Wake Surf Nationals. It'll be here later in July this year. We're also working with fairgrounds to bring in sporting events there. We also work with our local organizations like Snohomish Use Soccer with the Bigfoot because that generates room nights and also economic impact. We're attracting the visitors to come to Snohomish County, and that's basically locally as well as internationally. We promote the positive image of the county through sports and make sure that we're a premier sports destination. One important thing that what we do, and we're trying to communicate to the community, and we feel that this is really valuable, is that we provide equality of life opportunities for the residents because we know that we're in an area that we have a lot of sports teams local, and they get to play in those local, these tournaments that we're bringing in or working with the event organizations. And so it gives the kids opportunity to play and recreate, also the same way with adults. We also advocate for local sports facility development. We work with parks departments and other facility and how we can help them improve their facilities or even help write letters of support for renovation of playgrounds with the state grants, and so we're happy to do that as well. Next slide. The Snohomish County, that's okay. Our economic impact over the last six years, as you can see in 2018 and 19, I like to say we were rocking and rolling. Those are the best years that we ever, we've ever had. We had over $35 million in economic impact in 2018. 2019 was right behind that. And then you can see in 2020 with the pandemic, we lost everything. And then '21, we started to come back, and all of those, that economic impact and the room nights, that came from outdoor events. And then in 2022, we really doubled our economic impact. So we started to come back strong from baseball to lacrosse to a lot of the outdoors. And then in 2023, we were almost at $30 million of economic impact, and that's the best we've ever had since 2018 and 2019. And in 2024, we're already at $22.7 billion of economic impact, which is great, and we're only half, we're not even halfway there yet. So our team of four, including myself, we're working hard to retain our annual events as well as bringing new events. With the room nights, we've had a great increase. It kind of ebbs and flows like the economic impact. In 2024, we're already at close to 31,000 room nights for the county. One of the things that I would like to say started at the end of 2022 is that we aligned ourselves as a destination management organization, and we also invested into a industry standard economic impact calculator so that we're more accurate. And with this calculator, it shows us, it goes all the way down to the taxes that that event will bring to a city, how many jobs, how many dollars for the restaurants, the lodging, all of the hospitality industry sectors. So it really tells us a better story than what we used to do in, from '22 and before that. So we're really excited about this because it really showcases the value in, to the community and with what we do and how valuable it is. Next slide, please. For the county, '23, these are just a few highlight of the events. We had U.S.-Australian Football League, Western Region over at Lake Stevens Community Park. That was a brand-new event. Harvey Cup Boys Lacrosse is an annual event. They moved to Cash Park. Spartan Race Trifecta has been in the Monroe area since 2015. Perfect Game Northwest, they have annual events as well. So you can see that we do annual and in new events. Next slide, please. 2024, countywide, we've got USA Softball, 14 new Class B Western Nationals, first-time event. I'm very honored to be able to host a USA Softball. We've hosted NSA Softball, the National Softball Association. So being able to host USA Softball is a joy. We've got Enduro Cross Everett, and then a couple other ones. Lake Thai Triathlon is back as well in 2024. Next slide. So I like to break things down into districts, and in District 5, where Monroe is, its economic impact in 2018 was $18.7 million. And in 2024, we're already at 24, or excuse me, $12.4 million. And the room nights for 2024 were just over 16,700. And, next slide. And the reason that such a huge bump is Spartan Race Trifecta. It comes back every year. And then, next slide. And then we also have the Washington Midsummer Renaissance Fair out at Sky Meadow Park. Last year, this event was three weekends. They had 50,000 people over three weekends. Amazing. And they had people from Europe. This year, it's five weekends. So I can only imagine how many people in that. And I know the property owner, and he's done a great job of making sure that people can get in and out, and this is just, it's just fabulous, from local people to people internationally. Is this a sporting event for us? No. But I've been doing this for 20 years, and if somebody comes and says we need help, I'll help them. So the sports commission will help, will help anything. I have, I have a hard time saying no. Next slide. City of Monroe, what sports are in City of Monroe? Next slide, please. City of Monroe, just kind of give you an idea of the economic impact. In 2018 is about $3 million, and in 2024, we're just shy of 800,000. And that 800,000, that calculation is the World Wake Association National Championships coming in July, and the economic impact is for just almost 1,500 room nights for 2024. So we've had some ebb and flows with the City of Monroe, and I'm sure you're probably wondering, why, why is the dip? I'll say in 2022, we had U.S. Gymnastics Excel Regionals, and 2022 was the last year that we had the Tri-Monroe Triathlon, which was a USA Triathlon Junior Development Race. And we've lost those events. And when the facility, when the event center at the fairgrounds is not available, it's hard for us to bring those indoor sporting events to Monroe. So, but we, we work diligently to try to fit something in with the fairgrounds. So that's really the reason is we've lost some annual events and then just availability, particularly on the indoor. Next slide, please. So in '23, we had Gold Creek Questing Hundred and Jumper Show that was at the fairgrounds. Next slide. We also had the Western Washington Wrestling Association State Championship. They also won Heroes Tourism Award last year nationally, which was a great honor. Lots of kids is wrestling. Next slide, please. Also, Lake Thai Triathlon, next slide. And there's also the Fair Fest Three-on-Three Basketball, in which we're getting involved in helping them be able to promote their event as well and provide them some assistance. Next slide. For 2024, we've got the Wake Board, we got Lake Thai, Spartan Race, Washington Midsummer Renaissance Fair, and then I put the Speedway. Evergreen Speedway is a great partner with us. They are at numbers, don't calculate with what they do, but I know that they bring a lot of visitors in, they bring a lot of people from outside the area as well, staying in hotels, filling up the Monroe Hotels as well as Bothell and Everett. And Doug and Tracy are just, are great, great partners, and we try to promote and make sure that the Speedway, how can we help them as well? So, next slide. And then I'd just like to thank City of Monroe, their staff, the community, the chambers, and then also you as a council member and the mayor. We cannot do what we do without you guys because we're kind of like a conduit, and we need our partners. We need our local businesses, we need our chambers, our schools, our colleges, all of our facilities. And so that's why I say we can't do it without all of the partners because we don't own anything, we don't run any, operate anything, we just kind of like bring people and just the great partnerships. And I will say the Monroe Parks Department, for as long as I know from 20 years, having Mike Farrell and his staff, they're just fabulous to work for. And just really kind of like, how can we help? And also, what do you have to bring to us? And so that's what we look for as well. Next slide, please. Last thing that I'd like to kind of tout is that we do have a Hall of Fame induction banquet. We honor local athletes, coaches, sports contributors, and teams from around the county every year. And we just announced our induction class for 2024, and so we have a banquet that's coming up in September. And then we also honor high school athletes, collegiate athletes, and Herald of Men and Women of the Year. So we kind of bring the past with the present. Next slide. And the last thing I'd like to end with is one of our videos, brand videos that a huge production, who's out of Arlington produced for us last year, kind of tells our story a little bit about how we're trying to brand Snohomish County. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Tammy?
Well, I'm a sports nut, so thank you for that presentation. I love it. That just got me all jazzed up. I have to tell you, I was just last night talking to a group of friends about the Renaissance Fair, and they all want to go. They, some of them went last year, some of them, it was sold out, so they couldn't go. But I noticed the expansion to five weekends, which is fabulous. And that's really a cool thing for us to have here. Jousting can be considered a sport, right?
I think so.
Yeah, possibly.
Yeah. It's just, I was, they were referred, and they called me up, and I'm like, sure, how can we help?
Yeah, that's just great.
And so, yeah, they're back, and we're helping them with hotels and getting some analytics of our own, but they do a great job of analytics to tell where people come from, so.
That's great. Well, we love being known as a sports city and hosting all of these events, and I just think it's one of the best things that we do. So I really appreciate you and your team, and of course, our Monroe Parks helping and city staff. But I just really enjoyed the presentation, really enjoyed the info you provided in the packet, and just want to thank you and ask if there's anything we can be doing to attract more events like this.
I would say a sports facility. Yeah, I think our biggest, our biggest challenge, and this is just countywide, is having a large enough sports facility that is like 100,000 square foot. I know, you know, we, we were part of the Parks Recreation and Tourism, not, we were still a separate organization, but we were housed with the Parks Recreation and Tourism prior to 2022, and working with Tom Tigan and his team. And I know the fairgrounds is doing some stuff, so it's just any, any kind of connections, any, you know, to be able to help, you know, referrals or connections. You know, right now, our indoor facilities are our school districts, and we're trying to build a better partnership. We know we need to build a better partnership. How can we get into the schools? Because our challenge is that we have people that they want to book out a year in advance, and unfortunately, the schools only book out three months in advance. So when we're bringing somebody in, it's a challenge, but if we can have others that can help us in the community to kind of advocate or say this is a good thing, you know, how do we move those things? Move mountains a little bit, I think is helpful, but yeah, just anything that you guys know, you know, let, let us know. I'm one to, I don't know how to say no, and that, so I'm, I'm here to help. I have a passion for it, and yeah, I could speak, I could talk on my log, so. Welcome.
Go ahead, Councilmember. Yes. Sorry, I called Tammy Tammy because I was thinking Tammy Tammy. I should have said Councilmember Beaumont, so I shortened you to just Councilmember rather than Jake. I'm transitioning.
That works. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your presentation. Appreciate the work that you guys do. Just out of curiosity, do you guys go and try to like actively recruit for recreational events from outside the area? And if so, what is that, what is that process kind of like? Because I've always wondered.
Sure.
Should I be shooting emails off to people in New York or something? Like, bring that triathlon here?
Yeah. So what we do is we go to sports conferences, and I'll just use 2023 as an example, because I was, I was the sales, though I was the executive director, I was also the salesperson. So I felt like I was constantly on the road. So we were, we attend a large conference called Connect Sports, and we have the opportunity to meet with 30, 35 event owners nationally, like Triple Crown Sports to US Figure Skating, all the national governing bodies, even Prep Northwest or Prep Network, baseball, Perfect Game nationally. So we're constantly on the road, going to these conferences and building those relationships. And then following up, I think our key is following up consistently and then doing those emails. But we, we've got six, six conferences that we're going to, and two of those conferences, I will say, are esports, e-gaming. So we're, we've, we've been dabbling into the esports since about 2020, and I've kind of taken that program on because there, there's a huge, it's huge out there. So that's how we're getting those, and then just follow up with emails and home calls and get, get those events and put together a bid proposal.
That is so cool. And then lastly, the 2024 numbers, there was a slide earlier that looked like they were trending really well. Is that on track to exceed those amazing 2018 numbers? Do you have any idea what your guys' year-to-date figures are?
I think so. I think we're going to, we're going to, these are, these numbers I think are from April, and so we've already secured probably another 1,000 room nights, just with some events that are happening later in the year. And one that I get to say is definite, which is a unique one, which is a National Beard and Moustache Championship. They, they got the mustache, and I will say that ladies also participate with their own hair, long hair or design, so it's really cool, but that, that'll probably bring in about 600 room nights. So I expect us to, with room nights, probably hit about 35,000, which will hit more numbers in that. Our goal is to do 10% over, so, you know, our goal is to strive for like 37, 38.
Awesome. Thank you very much. It's really exciting.
Thank you, Councilmember Scarborough, and Councilmember Fisher.
Yes, thank you for your presentation. It's always exciting to see. Somebody we should get her hooked up with when it comes to the school district sports participation is Councilmember Gamble, who's not here tonight. He's highly active in what happens, what he can get done with sports with a high school, and he may have a, a good hand on trying to help you schedule things farther out. I don't know, but I'm sure if he were here, he would have something to say, but he might be, since he's not here and he hasn't heard this, he doesn't know it, so it might be something we can get to.
Okay. Yeah, love to have a conversation, understand a little bit better. I think that's, that's what we'd like to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fisher?
First of all, I think if I don't shave for a couple weeks, I'm going to probably take the mustache beard thing. Just, just saying. How are you guys funded?
We are funded from the tourism promotion area, the lodging tax assessment, that is the $2 that the hoteliers collect, and it is the, only the hoteliers that are 50 rooms or more. That's, we are 100% funded.
Okay. And then, next question. If you had a dream of what you could do in Monroe, what would it be? You already hit a little bit on the, on like stadium stuff, school relationships. Is there anything else?
No.
No limits?
No limits. Well, if, if there was a way to filter Sky River and get it out of the floodplain, I think there'd be, Monroe could, with all of the fields, I mean, I think I've counted like 10 softball fields. And what a dream to have 10 softball fields, to be able to host something for like USA Softball where it's like concentrated, where the teams don't, are not traveling from Everett to Linwood, and then to Everett or another one, you've got it all in one community. So I'd say that's probably a dream with the Sky River because I know those, those fields are awesome. And I know we're working, we're actually working diligently with Triple Crown Sports again to get a softball college showcase, which is a September-October timeframe, and that's, we've had one out here at Sky River, but then it rained, so it gets a little challenging. So I think that, that is probably one. And then I think just getting the, having the fairgrounds with another indoor facility that's large enough that you could use both, but then also the ability for us to use it. They're so full with return events. We respect that. It's just challenging for us to get in there because there's no open dates.
All right. Anything, you brought the Sky River, I don't think we can reroute that river, but anything for on-the-river stuffs, whether it's stand-up paddleboard competitions, kayaking competitions, anything like that ever come up?
Not too much. I think this, because it's what they're looking for. You know, I know Lake Thai, we work diligently with Lake Thai. You know, being able to have another triathlon, I will say the Tri-Monroe, that was near and dear to my heart. I put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears in that. Mike knows that. But that was such a great event that if there's, you know, we look for more stuff that we can do on Lake Thai because it is a perfect venue for it with wakeboarding and that. It's just, I just wish we could get wakeboard here almost every year because then it, then it would be great.
Thank you.
Councilmember Beaumont?
Just, thank you. Piggybacking on what Councilmember Scarborough was just saying about Councilmember Gamble, I'm also a coach at the high school, so if I can help in any way, reach out, please. See what I can do to help.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilmember Walker.
I just want to give a quick, huge amount of kudos to our Parks Department because the, the beauty of them and the maintenance that they have at all times is done by a very, very hard-working crew who, compared to the amount of acreage of parks we have in the city, it's amazing what they're able to get done. So, thank you again for the presentation.
All right. Any other questions or comments from the council? All right. Tammy, thank you so much. Good seeing you again.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda this evening. All right. Next item on the agenda this evening is public hearing. This is for item 6.1, public hearing for proposed code amendments to the Monroe Municipal Code, MMC Chapter 2222 Downtown Commercial Zoning District with Planner Bright. Good evening.
Wait just a minute. Great. Good evening. I'm here tonight for a public hearing for the proposed code amendments in the promenade subzone of the downtown commercial zone. It's a city initiated proposal and it's relating to extending civic uses into the downtown promenade. Again, here's a map of the downtown planning area and the area where the code amendment proposal is, is within the red. That's the downtown promenade. It extends on the ground or street level portion of all buildings facing Main Street between Madison and Woods. And so that, the intent of that is the commercial tenant spaces and suites located along that area. And the goal, the promenade was added after the downtown master plan was created, but really the goal when it was, when it was created in 2017, 2018 was to have uses that promote pedestrian activity and interaction. And so that's where you can walk in to a restaurant, you can pop into a store as you move down Main Street. So the proposed amendments include membership organizations. Currently, membership organizations are only allowed in the promenade as an accessory use. And that means that an accessory use has to be incidental and subordinate to a primary use. So when somebody comes in for that, that typically is less than 50% of the primary use can be an accessory use. So when looking at where we could put certain uses, maybe the chamber, other types of uses, we thought maybe we could turn this into a conditional use here. And so that's what we're proposing. Here's the definition of membership organizations. I know there's been a question in the past over indoor fitness and health clubs and how they fit into this. I just wanted to read the definition of indoor fitness and health clubs. So there are commercial establishments having a membership and/or open to the general public to use its health and fitness equipment. So that is not included in membership organizations. Indoor fitness and health clubs are currently permitted outright in the East Downtown area and conditionally within historic name. So this proposal does not include adding indoor fitness and health clubs to the promenade. The other proposed code amendments include adding courts, government administration buildings, police stations, and US post offices into the downtown promenade. And the proposal is for them to be conditional. And the conditional use permit process is different than a permitted use. That is, it requires a greater level of review and opportunity for public input. And so we send out notices to affected property owners. It goes through a public hearing and it ensures that we have followed the public process and, and add special conditions to their permit. Generally, when we look at those, we're, we're making sure that they're not negatively impacting the neighborhood. So that process is a type three permit. Like I said, it includes public notice. There's a public hearing in front of a hearing examiner who then makes a decision and then that decision is recorded against the property. When looking at making these changes, we looked at the comp plan, the downtown master plan and the 2023 to 2027 strategic priorities. As I mentioned, the subzone is newer. It, we have many areas in our comprehensive plan that promote development of civic and cultural facilities in the downtown area. This presentation has been given to EDAB, who then made a recommendation of approval to Planning Commission. And then in your packet, you will find that Planning Commission has made a recommendation to you for approval.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions? Councilmember, go ahead. Fulcher. I'm into first names tonight. I'm trying to correct myself right now. So.
Totally okay.
Councilmember Heather.
Yeah, absolutely. Mayor Jeffrey. So when you said negative impact, I'm assuming that we're talking about like parking issues that would come from a place that was having meetings instead of being an actual business front or something like that.
That could be a negative impact. Looking back, other conditional uses that we've done maybe include a doggy daycare. And so you look at how, what, you know, they're conditional, we, we go through and we look at specific impacts that, from that business.
I would think that especially if a building downtown had its own parking, then that wouldn't necessarily be a negative impact. So, okay, I like it. Thank you very, oh, one more question. So if a place, how do we say it? So if, if something was already down there that was using, if there was an organization down in this zone that was already using it as a meeting place type thing, then this would automatically be swept into that. They would, they would then be legit, correct?
I think your question is, is if an organization, a membership organization is already being utilized as an accessory use in the downtown?
Yeah, I knew you'd have a better way to say that. Thank you.
Yeah, yes, they would then not, we, we've discussed this and they would not need to go through a conditional use permit process. They are currently established.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Planner Bright, I do have one question. When you're looking at the negative impacts, the promenade, I think one of the reasons why the promenade was established with the uses that are there was to generate more interest where people would be going sort of from store to store, reduce the likelihood that somebody would park there for a long period of time just to go to a meeting that might last multiple hours and things like that. The intent was to get people to go from door to door to go shopping and things like that. When you're talking about negative impacts and the conditional use permit, are there any, and I'm sorry, I don't have the information right in front of me right now. Are there any criteria to make certain that the intent of the promenade is, is being met with the conditional use that would get approved so that we don't end up with uses that are only inhabited one day or two days a week for a couple hours and then is just, you know, space without life the rest of the week, which again, we were trying to get walkable, walkability in the downtown?
That is, that is a consideration that staff would make and then bring that forward to the hearing examiner. Yes.
And is that codified?
It, it is not specific because the conditional use section of the code is, is pretty broad, but it gives us items that we need to make sure that we are meeting. And I believe that that would fall within that as well. It makes sure that we are looking at all aspects of the municipal code and the comp plan and the municipal code as the purpose of the promenade mentions.
If, if it's okay with council, I'd be willing, because this is just here for first reading tonight, I'd be willing to have you come back with some more information about during second reading and with respectful request of council wanted to move this forward, not to do it on consent, but rather bring it back so that the whole body and, and the mayor can also hear a little bit more information about how that would be applied. My interest again is just that the promenade, you've got the 10-foot sidewalks that are out there. The intent is walkability. Conditional use permit makes sense, but understanding that there is a little bit of prescriptiveness to it, I think is a good thing. And then I'd also like it clarity, if there is an accessory use in the downtown right now, it seems to me that that should go through a conditional use permit process because it would have been permitted as an accessory to change it to a principal use would be to change the use to a conditional. And I just want to make it, I just want to clarify that that is, that that would be my expectation was, did I misunderstand the response to Councilmember Fulcher?
I don't think you misunderstood an internal conversation that, that we'd had about it.
Okay. So anyway, that would be my respectful request is that it not be brought back on consent. We get some more information. I can see some of the uses that are identified on here that, like a governmental use where you might have a chamber that acts also as a visitor center that would be open, you know, Monday through Friday and maybe Saturday, Sunday also when the other businesses are open, as opposed to another kind of use that might like political advocacy, I think was one of the things that might only be open during one part of the year. And what comes to mind is when I was serving as a planning commissioner for the city of Olympia, there was a neighborhood just south of the Capitol where we had a number of residents that were really unhappy that for nine months of the year, people's yards would grow over, homes would be unmaintained. There was nobody living next door to them and that was their neighborhood. And the reason why there was nobody living next door to them was that those were legislators and lobbyists and advocacy groups. And while that is a unique circumstance, it is a circumstance that I'd be concerned about happening in our small downtown. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments before I open this up to public hearing? All right, thank you. Before I read the long script, is there anybody that would like to give public comment during the public hearing for the ordinance tonight? If so, raise your hand. Okay. So there's a long script. You can come forward and give public comment right now on the hearing if you, if you'd like. If not, I'm going to turn to the council and see if they would like to close the public hearing. Okay, seeing nobody that would like to speak tonight, I'll turn to the council. You have a motion for your consideration. And I think that it would be reasonable that this does not come back to consent, but it would come back to an appropriate section of the agenda, but that doesn't need to be specified in here. Okay. So I turn to council. Councilmember has her flag partway up. Fulcher.
Now I'm going to argue with my mic. Thank you. I move to approve for first reading ordinance number 0022024, amending chapter 22.22 MMC Downtown Commercial Zoning District, updating and expanding the categories of conditionally allowed uses within the promenade subzone of the downtown commercial zoning district, providing perseverance and establishing effective date.
I have a motion from Councilmember Fulcher, a second from Councilmember Hanford for the motion as shown on the screen. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, I'll move to vote. I'll, I'll, all for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Thank you very much. All right, move on to the next item on the agenda and that item would be the consent agenda. And I turn to the council. Councilmember Beaumont.
I move to approve the consent agenda as provided in the packet.
I have a motion from Councilmember Beaumont, a second from Councilmember Hanford to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Fulcher, go ahead.
I would like to pull item six, please, for discussion.
Okay, one moment. So item 7.6, correct?
Exactly.
Okay. I am going to request Councilmember Fulcher that you make a motion to amend the motion to remove item 7.6 from the consent agenda.
Okay. Do I need to make a motion to pass it all except for that one? Okay, good.
Oh, that would, we want to amend it because there's a motion already that would sort of contradict it. So it would be 7.6.
Okay.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay.
That's, that's the wording I was going for. Thank you. I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda without item 7.6. Will that work?
Yep. Okay. So there's a motion to amend to remove 7.6. Any discussion? Oh, wait, I need a second. Thank you. Okay, with Hanford seconding, any discussion? Again, we're just removing 7.6 and then we'll vote on the apparent motion, which is to approve it without 7.6. Okay, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Now we're back to the amended motion, which is to approve the consent agenda without item 7.6. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes 6-0. All right, thank you. We'll go ahead and now move to consent agenda item number 7.6. And Councilmember Fulcher, you requested it to be pulled. So I will go to you. And then do, I'm sorry, just a second. And I'd like to invite the staff member forward, Rachel Adams, to the table.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I'll just wait for Rachel.
It's okay.
Excellent. All right, Ms. Adams, I just had some questions about, I see that we've got a increase in how much this is costing us for our social worker. And I know that we take a lot of pride in being the second place in state of Washington by just three weeks that had the social worker added into our regular routes. I just kind of feel like we, we've done, that was a great thing on its own when it started. Since then, we've gotten more tools in the toolbox and we have peer support with St. Vincent de Paul and we've got the coresponder, thanks to the mobile mental health, which is excellent. So what kind of return on investment are we seeing in this increasing cost here? Is there a way that we can look at the data? Because, you know, if, if Councilmember Gamble were here, that's what he'd be wanting, data, data, data. So I just kind of, do we have a report on how, how many people have moved forward in their life thanks to the work of our social worker, embedded social worker?
So Chief Jolly just handed me Angie Dorsted's report from the county that came out today for May. And there have been, for that month, seven initial contacts made, five SUDs completed, two diversion center time completed, treatment for SUD inpatient scheduled was four, treatment completed for SUD inpatient is two, treatment initiated SUD intensive outpatient was zero, and housing secured is one.
Thank you. My other question is regarding with our embedded social worker, I feel like there's some relation to us being able to access the diversion center. Is that only because of our social worker or would a city not like ours, doesn't have an embedded social worker? What kind of access do we have compared to, I mean, is one a ticket in or how does that relate? Explain that to me.
No, there could be various options. That's a segue to get people into a diversion center is having an embedded social worker with the contacts and the authority to do that. And that also creates a liaison between other programs and the entire cycle to allow people to get access to drug or alcohol treatment or mental health services, for example, with the eventual goal to get people in the housing. So I just would want to also remind the council that this particular program is a segue for the police department to be able to interdict people who are chronically homeless. And by doing so with some of the recent legislation that's, or not legislation, but case decisions that have come out here in the Ninth Circuit, this enables us to show that we are offering services and then can follow up with enforcement. So that's a key point to being able to provide people an avenue to find housing or help. And if that's, they're noncompliant or not moving, for example, out of a park, then there's enforcement because we can provide housing and services.
Okay. I feel like there's so many questions that pop up beyond that, but they're just side little how-tos type thing. My only concern is that's a lot of money and I just want to make sure for two days a week that that's actually worth our money for that. Like I said, it was, it was the best thing at the time that we instituted it. Is it still the best thing? That is my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Walker, go ahead.
Piggybacking off Councilmember Fulcher's point about the, the costs relative to two days a week. a week, is, has there ever been an analysis done of, of kind of the, the costs associated with a program like this? Is it, is there precedent for it anywhere else in the country? Are there cities that have hired an equivalent? It's just, like, like she was saying, the price is just so high for two days a week. It's like, what, what functionally justifies that much money compared to the function of the role? Not, not to say that it is not an incredible role, it is. I've got a lot of, a lot of feedback confirming that, but I guess the, the question is, are there any cities that have ever kind of tried to take on this role in-house or chief? Is that something that could satisfy that same kind of requirement of the night, or check that box of us providing services?
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly what you're asking, but I would just say that there's several cities that have tried several different approaches and have this embedded social worker concept in various forms, whether it's four days a week or full-time, or, so there's different varieties, there's different ways of implementing it. This has been successful for us in the past. Regarding the cost increase, I'm not familiar with the exact, because that's, Human Services manages that contract now. So, my awareness or being keen to that increase, I apologize for that unaware. But again, this has been a very successful program for us and allows us to be able to interdict and deal with things at the livability level and the visibility level. It, it's been a very successful program for us, being able to keep visible tents popping up in various areas of the city. You can speak to the cost.
So, yeah, the, the cost increase is due to a clerical error that was discovered and is increasing Monroe's portion from 122,715.50 to 126,481.
And, yes. I'm, I'm sorry, I wasn't talking about the clerical error, it was just more of the fact that, because I think we're, we're doing half of it, so 250, I think, is the, the cost of it, 207. So, 207K for two days a week, I just, it's incredible to try to think about the costs associated with 20 hours of work. And if a city was to tack on another day, do you have any idea, is that like another 100,000 per day, or? It's financial, I'm sorry, financial semantics, I'm just trying to, to, I guess, put in perspective in my own mind.
Councilmember Walker, if I may, just second.
This is the cost over 12 months, so this is just one year.
So, Rachel, and that, when does the current contract expire?
The current contract is in effect until December 31, 2026, unless terminated as provided herein or mutually extended.
Okay, so this is an amendment to the current contract?
This is an amendment.
Okay, when, so I should have been more precise, when, when is it necessary to amend the contract?
As soon as possible.
What we can certainly do is we can bring this back to the meeting next week, so that staff has an opportunity to review the contract and have more responses. So, what I'm going to do is I'm going to encourage the council to go ahead and, as you have some additional questions here right now, we can go ahead and we can take those down, and then come back with those to talk about them in more detail next week. So, Councilmember Walker, did you have any, any other questions?
No, I'm sorry for the, for using so many words to ask.
No, don't worry about it.
It was a loose question. Thank you.
Yeah, Councilmember Foulter?
Mine is a real easy one. Which?
Blue, oh, sorry.
Perfect, thank you. Which, which budget does this come out, does it come out of our police budget, or does it come out of our human services budget?
Human services.
Excellent, thank you.
Are there any other questions that staff can prepare responses to? Go ahead, Councilmember Beaumont.
Thank you. What I hear is a couple of questions from my fellow council members here about maybe some kind of a comparison about how much this costs in other cities, in other, having an embedded social worker. I think if we just had some information about what's typical, it might help. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanford?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to clarify, so this, this action that is needed to be taken is just to correct a typo?
A clear, clear.
A clear, clear. And when does the current term expire?
The current contract that we designed, that was signed back in December of 2023, I believe, is through 2026. It's a three-year contract.
Okay.
That's renegotiated like each year.
Okay. And when's the renegotiation?
Will be probably December of this year.
So, I'm, I'm just trying to think, wouldn't it make sense to just pass this?
You can.
Because it's, it's just a clear, clear.
You can.
And then, and then we can put it on agenda for discussion, study session for the future.
Yeah.
So, that being said, I'll move, but this, these are all great questions. I move to, if I can find it.
There's a, if you.
7.6.
There you go.
I move to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the amended interlocal agreement with Somers County for Law Enforcement, Embedded Social Worker Services, which amended agreement shall replace and supersede the original ILA approved by the City Council on December 12, 2023.
Second, Foulter.
I have a motion from Councilmember Hanford, a second from Councilmember Foulter for a requested action 7.6, shown on the screen. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes six zero. Thank you. We'll go ahead and we'll put this on a future agenda so that we can get more information about the program to the council members.
Just confirming, Mr. Mayor, if you have other questions that are concerns that you want answered, we'd be happy to track down any answers.
Yeah, I think, I think we heard the questions from the council members just during this conversation right here. So, yeah, and we can, we can certainly talk about it a little bit afterwards as well, just to make certain we're bringing back some information about the program. I do recall, for example, at one point, being told a couple of years ago that it's not just for two days, but sometimes the person's here for more than two days, so probably just getting some more information about the program, you know, what's written in the words versus what actual practice is, I think, is, is part of what might be missing here, and so on. So, okay, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, and that item would be, item 8.1. Item 8.1, confirm appointment, Community Human Services Advisory Board positions. And I'll call on Rachel Adams.
All right, Ms. Lopez is joining me tonight. We are presenting the opportunity to confirm the mayor's appointment of Erin Lopez to the Community Human Services Advisory Board, position one, with the term ending 12/31/2025. Mayor and staff conducted an interview with Ms. Lopez on June 4, 2024, and we are requesting a confirmation of the mayor's appointment. And that concludes my review.
Thank you very much. So, Ms. Lopez's information is in your packet, so I'm going to go ahead and invite Ms. Lopez to just sort of introduce yourself to the group and briefly explain why you're interested in serving. Thank you.
Good evening, how are you guys? So, my name's Erin Lopez, I'm currently a pure outreach specialist at Ideal Option. I started my recovery journey here in this area due to a DCYF case with my kiddos out there. And although I'm from the area, I wasn't immediately like in the area doing things I was doing. But because my mom and my dad are in the area, I was able to utilize some of the services out here, such as C Mar, Conker. I even stayed at the women's mission for four or five months. And so, my kids are already here, and I didn't want to uproot them. So, they're here playing sports, they're in school, and when the position opened up at the clinic here in Monroe, I, I jumped on it. I'm already out here with St. Vincent de Paul, Roger Evans, Take the Next Step, doing outreach, I'm with the community, I'm with the folks that are experiencing homelessness. And so, I would just really like the exposure on how all of this stuff works and how things get implemented, and, yeah.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, Councilmember Hanford.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Ms. Lopez, I read your notes and appreciated your honesty and candor, and appreciate you stepping up and making a difference and paying it back and paying it forward. So, I move to confirm mayor's appointment of Erin Lopez to the Community Human Services Advisory Board, position one, the term ending 12/31/2025.
The motion from Councilmember Hanford, a second from Councilmember Scarborough for the requested action that is shown on the screen for item, new business item 8.1. Did you want to speak to your motion, Councilmember Hanford? Okay. Councilmember Fisher, I saw your flag go up, and then Councilmember Beaumont, Councilmember Fisher?
I just want to say thank you. Thanks for stepping up and doing this. This is an important part of how the city works and how we find people that need help. I was also part of the homeless policy advisory committee at one point in time that kind of turned into the Jazab thing. And, yeah, I just really appreciate you coming forward and willing to help out and volunteer your time and your expertise, and more importantly, your life experience. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Beaumont?
Thank you. Well, Councilmember Fisher said it all. I just, I also read this, read your information, and I can't think of anyone better to serve in this position than you, because you have lived this and you were able to share that with some of the people that you're trying to help, and I think that that is invaluable, and just really, really appreciate you stepping up, and we're very grateful. Thank you, Erin.
Thank you.
Councilmember Walker?
I, I just wanted to say, from having had some conversations with Roger and others who have done similar work before, I think it is so huge when someone with lived experiences pursues positions like this, because you do have a level of empathy and understanding that is so, so important and can help policymaking have, have that gray factor in there, and it also leads to better connections between the city and our homeless population, and figuring out how our resources are or are not working, and, and how we can identify opportunities with that. So, thank you for being willing to, to step up, and as Councilmember Hanford said, your, your candor is so appreciated, so we're grateful to have you, and thank you.
All right. With all that said, I will call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes six zero. Congratulations, board member.
Thank you.
All right, the next item we have on the agenda is new business item number 8.2, ordinance number 0032024, amending MMC 3.54.130, transportation impact fees for first reading. Scott Peterson, good evening, how are you?
Good evening, Mayor, I'm fine. Good evening, council members. Switching subjects for a little bit, we're talking about something exciting here, transportation impact fees. So, tonight is per procedural, every year we update our transportation fees to reflect inflation. And we do that using Washington State Department's Transportation's Construction Cost Index, so we call it CCI. Our code 3.54.130 talks about the procedure behind it, but we have to update it annually using a five-year rolling average of the CCI. So, a year ago, we calculated it, here we are calculating it again. What turns out is that our inflation factor for this year is 5.1% increase. So, we simply take that 5.1% increase and we increase our various transportation fees by the, well, type of development proposed accordingly, just to keep track with inflation. So, we don't, don't get behind in the cost, so to speak. As an example, for a single-family resident home, the value will go up by $205. Currently, it's $4,026, as proposed to be $4,231, just to absorb that 5.1% inflation. In the agenda bill, it's attached the draft of the ordinance, the ordinance is necessary to update our code. It's pretty, pretty simple presentation, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. I turn to the council for any questions or a motion. Go ahead, Councilmember Hanford.
I move to accept his first reading, ordinance number 0032024, amending chapter 3.54.130, MMC, transportation impact fees, updating the city's codified transportation impact fee schedule pursuant to MMC 3.54.130, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
I have a motion from Councilmember Hanford, a second from Councilmember Scarborough for the requested action as shown on new business item 8.2 on the screen. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes six zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is new, new business item number 8.3, resolution setting public hearing date for amending ordinance number 1161, vacation of a portion of Mountain View Road Southeast right-of-way. Mr. Peterson, again.
Thank you very much. So, this agenda bill is seeking to adopt resolution establishing public hearing, as the mayor just mentioned. It's to amend an ordinance that was done in 1999, where we vacated a little bit of Mountain View Road Southeast, but staff, legal counsel, we believe, is a Scrivener's error in it that essentially sent, as written, would send the piece not to the budding property, but to his neighbor a little further away. No one believed that. The county assessor shows it correctly, what we believe. The property owners think it's how it should be, you know, as it currently is. Anything other would be contrary to state law, and even there's a map in the original ordinance that showed it how it should have been. But somewhere in the complication of it, it, they used the word easterly when it should have been northerly. One of the things we believe happened is, the city of Monroe was also in the process of vacating a portion of Mountain View Road down on the south boundary. We were also acquiring some of that same lot's property on the west, and that acquiring and giving away, kind of the pieces got mixed up in the ordinance. So, we're here, just as a conservative approach, we're going to go through the typical process of right-of-way vacation, but we're really, we're just cleaning up that ordinance, to be clear. This was brought to us by the property owner's representative, saying, I think we got a little bit of a, something weird in ordinance back in 1999. Again, it's been this way for 24 or 25 years, and so it's just brought to our attention that there's just some weird anomaly in it. So, we're here to clean that up. So, in the agenda, I have the resolution, draft resolution for you to review. We have the original ordinance, 1161, which shows the property where we were acquiring and giving away at the same time. And then also, we have a vicinity map in case you're not sure where this little piece of property is in the city of Monroe. That is pretty much my presentation.
All right. Sounds good. Easterly, northerly, who wants to correct it? Councilmember Beaumont?
I think your approach is prudent, and this was very interesting, because this is kind of in my neighborhood, so I took a pretty close look at this. So, I agree, just needs to be cleaned up, and I move to approve resolution number 2024012, setting a public hearing date at which to consider the amendment of ordinance number 1161, vacating a portion of the Mountain View Road Southeast right-of-way.
I have a motion from Councilmember Beaumont, a second from Councilmember Foulter for the requested action for new business item 8.3, as shown on the screen under new business. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes six zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is new business item number 8.4, council rules or procedure amendments. Clark Wykoff, good evening again.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Before you this evening is a resolution to, a proposed resolution to amend the council rules of procedures related to sections 9.4, public comments, 9.6, public hearings, and section, I say 1P, but I don't think, I think that's a typo on my part, appeals before city, before council, to address how the council will receive public comments consistent with federal and state law, other minor Scrivener corrections. with federal and state law, other minor Scrivener corrections. I noticed a couple of misspellings, like the one I did on my agenda. So just a quick history, we all remember December 5th and we all remember December 12th, where we amended council rules and procedures to no longer accept public comment remotely. And I brought forward to the Legislative Affairs Committee some options after doing some research. It is my recommendation that council ratify that decision that they made on December 12th. And after presenting it to the Legislative Affairs Committee, they did request that I bring that recommendation forward. So that is what you see in the draft proposed amendments.
Thank you very much. Any questions or a motion from the council? Councilmember Fulcher?
Since I am on the Legislative Affairs Committee, I will go ahead and say, yes, we did agree with Clerk Wykoff on this. And so I move to approve resolution 2024-013, amending Monroe City Council Rules and Procedure.
I have a motion from Councilmember Fulcher, a second from Councilmember Scarborough for the requested action on the slide for 8.4 New Business. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes six zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item 9.1, discussion recommendation, request for proposals for solid waste recyclables and compostables collection. Megan Darrell?
Late last year, the city council directed staff to review what it would take to complete the three-part process of exiting. A little bit of background, the city contract, the contract by, as it says, the market, the the, 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 the,[1022.51]
Deborah, was anything else that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda we have is council member reports. I'm going to go ahead and start today with council member Fulcher.
Man, this is what I get for talking so much during the council meeting. Quickly, quickly looking. I did have a tour of the food bank scheduled since I missed the ribbon cutting with most of you, but we have moved that to next week. Councilmember Scarborough and I are going to go see the new digs, so looking forward to that. Other than that, you know, I was busy, but I can't tell you what we've.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Scarborough. All right, thank you. Councilmember Fisher.
Here we go, super random tonight. Went to the Pride event, it was awesome as usual. I saw you, some of you running around out there. I wasn't there for very long because I was painting my house, so, but I did get a chance to go down there and check out the festivities. Also attended my Left One meeting and have had a lot of conversations with residents around my neighborhood and the city just about current events in the city. So it's been, it's been busy doing that, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanford.
Thank you, Mayor. I was there on Sunday as well and saw some of you, so I think that was it for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Beaumont.
Thank you, Mayor. I was actually around for the senior class parade on Friday night, which was really cool. It was really, really amazing. I think it, I've not gone to all of them, but I've gone to a lot of them, and this one seemed longer and the cars were decorated more elaborately. I mean, I think people really got into it this year, which was really great, so that was a lot of fun. Pride on Sunday was a huge gathering. My gosh, I don't think I've ever seen that many people there, and you gave a wonderful introduction speech. That was really fantastic. And Superintendent Sean Wood was there as well, gave a great speech. And I stopped by the city booth and saw Chief Jolly and Kate and Leanne and had a chance to chat with them a little bit. And Kate actually shared with me something really amazing that I wanted to talk about tonight, and that is that members of our community development department went to the high school and actually participated, I think presented comp plan information to Scott Darrow and Tyson Horner's civics classes and spent the whole day there from what I understand, I think four or five classes, Kate. So I was thrilled to hear that. I think that's fantastic use of their time trying to kind of explain what we're doing at the city and maybe, you know, find out what high school seniors think about the city and just really, really appreciate city staff making, and Mayor Thomas, I see you were there as well. I look, I'm looking at the picture right here that's in one of the classrooms. So that was something that I really felt just happy about. I think that's a wonderful use of everyone's time, and that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Walker.
Attended the Kala Vibhavam, Power of Art Dance at the Frank or the Wagner Performing Arts Center on Saturday with Mayor Thomas. The Consul General of India, Prakash Gupta, was there, as was Representative Eslik, and it was just such a, such a cool, cool moment being able to, to be immersed in, I don't know, just to encounter a dance that you've never seen before. Mayor was asked to give a speech at the last moment. I guess that'd be two days in a row that you gave speeches this weekend. This one he didn't know he was supposed to give, and of course he went up there and gave a Nobel Prize speech as he does. But he expressed how beautiful it was and also just so, it struck me just how lucky we are to have that performing arts center. And the group that put it on did a wonderful job expressing their appreciation for it. It was a fundraiser for some refurbishments or reupholstering some of the chairs, and I would love to continue to see that facility be used. I think it's a gem and kudos to the Monroe Arts Council for the work that they've been putting that into that as well. Administrator Knight, I heard that you have been an awesome point of contact from the city to the Monroe Arts Council and assisting in whatever ways we can. I'm pretty sure there's clones of you or something because I've, I hear that in so many different arenas that Administrator Knight helped with this and that, so thank you.
We weren't supposed to tell you about that.
Uh-oh.
Is that the real Deborah Knight?
Yeah.
It probably took them six months to figure it out.
Yes.
And then lastly, I forgot last week to mention also an expression of gratitude for your work, Director Roberts' work, Zach Humphrey's work, and whoever, whoever else helped with the grant applications that were accepted by Representative Del Benny's office. That was a big, big deal, and I know that you guys have been putting so much time and research into that process, and I'm glad to see that your fruit's paid off and it is for the benefit of our entire community. So thank you guys for the work that you put into that and, yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Scarborough.
I did forget to mention one thing. I went to Snohomish High School's graduation in Edward last night. Were about three hundred and fifty some odd students graduated, and I'll be attending Monroe High School graduation tomorrow night for my grandson, so. One granddaughter Monday night, grandson tomorrow night. It's quite a venue, and I can see where, having been at the school district so long when we were having the graduations, in the gymnasium, and at the point we had to go to having a venue in the Angel of the Winds, the event center, so, and they're so big, and they did a fine job, a lot of hooting and hollering, I'll tell you that.
Thank you. All right, we're going to go out to staff department reports. We'll start off with the finance department with Director Hassert. This would be your last finance department report, I'm guessing.
I have one more at the end of the month.
You have one more report at the end of the month? Okay.
Hate to disappoint you, I do have one more.
No, no, that makes me happy. That makes me happy, it's good.
This one is actually for April of 2024, and it's being presented tonight because we didn't have a meeting on the fourth Tuesday of last month, which is normally when it would be presented. So the information is a little dated, it is in your packet, and I am available for questions.
All right, any questions for Director Hassert for the April report? My bad, I wasn't paying attention to May. Go ahead, Councilmember Fisher.
I just had a question about one item in here, and I was trying to find it again, but I can't because there's pages and pages of stuff in here. But I think it was like $20,000 for running boards on one of the pickup trucks or something. Don't know if.
In the claims or in the finance report?
I think it was in the finance report. I'm scanning still, if you can see my fingers, I'm doing this a lot. And I don't know if, I'll try and find it again. I don't know if it would just be something on top of somebody's head that's out there. It just seemed like a lot for running boards on one of our trucks.
And if you can't find it right away, you can always email me, and then I can send the answer out to the entire council.
Okay, thank you. I'll try and find it.
Good.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. We'll see you in a couple weeks for the May. All right, next one is police department, April 2024 report with Chief Jolly. Chief Jolly.
Mayor, council, good to be here, thank you. You have within your packet the police department report, and if you have any questions, I'm available.
Any questions, council? All right, thank you very much, chief. Next one would be the parks department report with, I was going to call you Councilmember Farrell, Mike. Director Farrell.
Okay.
I'm just doing all sorts of different names tonight. Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor Thomas. Good evening, council members, and like the others said, the department report is in your packet. However, I am going to point out something here. Big thanks to the Monroe Police Department, it's in there, who helped monitor and slow down traffic around our maintenance crew while they were out working in the roadway. Our crew had been experiencing speeding and distracted drivers while in their work zones, and we requested some help from the police department, and Sergeant Carswell took the time to listen to the crew's concerns and scheduled Officer Patton to patrol the area while the crew was working in the meetings. And there's one other thing I wanted to highlight out of the report, and it is towards the end there, at the end of page three, the Lake Thai Life Jacket Loner Station, I don't know if you've noticed that. That is just amazing. It's a great partnership with the SRFR, I always, Snohomish Rescue Fire, Regional Fire Rescue, I know, so, those folks, those fine folks, and the City of Monroe Parks and Snohomish County Safe Kids. So those are out there, and I'll just say, I mean, it's, it's, you know, this is a serious thing, and it's, and it's wonderful to have something like this there for people just that either didn't think about something like that, maybe this will put a thought in their head, or they didn't have access to it, you know, you never know as far as, you know, affordability and whatnot, but these are there now, they're free to use. Twelve years ago, some of you may recall, we actually did have a drowning at Lake Thai, and so if one of these life jackets prevents a drowning, then, I mean, it just, it shows its value, so that's all. I'll cede the rest of my time back to Chief Jolly.
Any questions for Director Farrell?
Cool, that's great. Awesome. Nice. Thank you.
All right, to Clerk Wykoff for the city clerk, records department, first quarter 2024 report, extraordinary.
Yes, so apologies for the delay on the report. We have been busy in the Clerks and Records Office. We plan on bringing you Q2 shortly after the end of Q2, which is like in a couple weeks. In our report, just highlighting the staff appreciation, I always want to make sure that our staff gets the recognition they deserve. Sherry is a rock star when it comes to records. This particular records requestor, the, there were multiple departments involved, spent over almost 12 hours, and got the recognition they deserved from the requestor themselves. For January, February, March increases for all three months in public records requests, which is continuing the trend up that we've been seeing for the past couple of years. And then wanted to highlight just some of the other things we do besides records, so on the back page, you'll notice I just kind of gave a brief listing of some of the things that we do related to legislative support, records management, and as I like to say, other duties as assigned.
All right, thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you very much. Next report we have then is economic development report, May-June 2024 with Patrick Dougherty. Patrick?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and city council members. The first time that I address you with the report, and there it is on the screen. I know that you have that in your packet, I'm not going to certainly read that, but I just do want to say that between a summary of what EDAB's been working on and what I personally have been working on, I wanted just to point out a few highlights. EDAB has been doing its due diligence to work through the economic development element of the comprehensive plan for our mandatory update and did a really thorough strengths, weakness, opportunities, and threats analysis that has informed the work moving forward. In fact, this Thursday at their meeting, we'll be working through a set of proposed new goals and policies for that element. Also, EDAB has worked on discussion about how we can convene downtown property owners, and we did in fact have our first downtown merchant, I shouldn't have said property owners, properties and business owners. We did have our first downtown merchants group meeting on the 6th last week, and that was great, a good start. We had about a dozen people there, and we will be meeting again in July. And then just some of the highlights, other than the one I just mentioned, my working on that. I do meet with businesses every time I'm in town on Thursdays all around the commercial districts. I'm working on finalizing a re-engagement with the Lowe's people regarding our hoped-for re kind of negotiation of the terms there. Obviously mentioned the economic development element, and we also have a permitting survey that we hope to send out to people who receive permits in commercial building or land use permits over the last year, and we'll share that with EDAB again this Thursday, and then hopefully sometime this summer we can get that out. So those are some highlights, and we'll be happy to take any questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions from the council? All right, thank you very much, Patrick.
Hey, thank you.
Going to move on to the next item on the agenda, that's 11.6 Human Services, May 2024 Work Report with Caitlin Harrigan. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, council. I am here to present the Human Services Work Report for May of 2024, which is provided in your packet. A couple highlights I wanted to note, one is the official flyer for the Poverty 101 class that's going to be coming to Monroe in September. Encourage everyone to attend if they can. There's a QR code on the flyer if you'd like to register. Registration is free, and there's lunch provided, and we're very excited to be offering this class in Monroe. And a couple other highlights, we have a few events that Human Services staff was able to attend this, this past month, including collaborations with our local faith organizations and pastors, just discussing homelessness in our area and how, what progress has been made in the past 10 years, and that was a very fruitful event that also was well-attended by Take the Next Step. They helped with providing the presentation with that, so wanted to highlight that as being a very cool event that we were a part of, and also the Spring Into Recovery event that was put on by Evergreen Health Monroe. There was a very lovely speaker who was very, she highlighted a lot of Rachel's efforts with the scholarship ed program, so that was really awesome. So does anybody have any questions for me?
Thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next item we have on the agenda now, we're moving into mayor and administrative reports, section 12, 12.1 City Administrator Report for the extended agenda. Administrator Knight.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just trying to pull up the version that I can actually read from my screen. Looking at the upcoming meeting on June 18th, we will not have a city council finance and human resources committee meeting. If you recall, at our last meeting, we had scheduled a special city council meeting for the Public Safety Committee, and the two items that we were planning to bring forward, one is the police station facility assessment, and the other one was some draft budget recommendations. Either one of those items are ready, so that meeting will also be canceled, so there will be no committee meeting next week on the 18th. Looking forward then to the regular study session, we have a number of items to discuss. We have the 2044 Draft Land Use Chapter, and then Speed Zone Cameras and Retail Cannabis. So a number of items for the council to discuss next week at the study session. Looking forward then to the business meeting on the 25th, we currently don't have any items for the P3 Committee. For the regular business meeting, we will have the public hearing for the Mountain View Road Right-of-Way Vacation that was discussed this evening, the regular accounts payable, meeting minutes, payroll, and then the ordinance for the Downtown Commercial Code Amendment adoption, which was again discussed by council this evening, the mid-year fee resolution updates with Becky Hassert, and then the School Resource Officer ILA, and then the regular reports. Staff.
Thank you. And then we noted when council was adopting the motion on the first reading that the downtown commercial code amendments would not be under consent, so we'll make an adjustment there.
Yes, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. All right, any questions on the extended agenda? Councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. For next Tuesday's meeting, when we talk about the Speed Zone Cameras, could you, you probably already are figuring and planning for this, but could you please make sure to have the data from what we put out for the voters regarding traffic cameras and things like that, just so we have the whole scope of picture? I know they're two different things, but for a lot of people, it may be the same thing in their mind, so.
When you say data, are you talking about financial data or some other type of data?
No, we put it before the voters on whether they wanted red light cameras in Monroe, and the voters said they did not want those.
So when you're talking about the data, you're talking about the voter?
Voter data?
Yeah.
Voter data.
Election results, yeah.
Election results, ah, perfect.
That was probably 10 years ago, but something like that.
Probably about 11, yeah.
So definitely going to need a refresh on the data. Thank you.
Yes.
Councilmember Walker, did your flag go up? Okay, any, was that a yes?
Yes.
Okay, your red light told me I was wrong in what I.
No, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I don't know if this is the proper time to ask for it, but at a future study session, can we have a discussion about timelines that might need to be considered for some of the levies or bond ideas that we've discussed? I just start to be concerned, probably just overly anxious about like time is passing on some of these things where timeliness might be an issue, so I, I don't know if that's, that's something that staff could somehow discuss, like, hey, if you guys want to do this, we need to do it by the spring, or?
Yes, you are right, I think in alignment with the work that staff is currently doing. So at your next meeting, when we bring back the discussion around the levy lid lift, there will be timelines included in that. There's also a timeline included in the agenda bill for the can't retail cannabis, and the advisory vote is required for that, so.
Staff's amazing.
You'll get those timelines.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you very much. We're now going to go on to your regular administrators' report.
Sure, happy to do that. As I mentioned earlier, the June 18th Special Public Safety Committee meeting has been canceled. I do want to just welcome Liam McCorkle, our new management analyst. He's actually on the call, listening in, so he heard the request for voter data for the past election results because he's currently working on that agenda bill, and I think it'll be ready for prime time at the next meeting. I wanted to provide a couple of kudos. The comp plan open house that followed the work with our students last week was really well-attended. I heard great feedback from that meeting, and I know that the community development department staff were completely exhausted at the end of the day. I don't blame them, that is a very long day, but there was a lot of supporting staff too, people that came out and helped and assisted from our Public Works Department and Parks and others, so it was really great to see everybody come together for that meeting last week. I also wanted to give a shout out to Katie Darrow, who processes our special event applications. Those applications, as you could imagine, just get more complex, not necessarily from a city perspective, but from the things that are required by state law. And she had a really complex one for the block party that the chamber is hosting, and just did a really phenomenal job at working with the chamber and working with city staff to ensure that all of the requirements are being met. We're using our new program called Data AI, which tells us exactly how many people attend various events, because now there's a threshold that, at the state level, that requires kind of more intense review if an event has more than 1,000 people. So we're starting to track that much more carefully than we had in the past, but at any rate, I wanted to recognize Katie Darrow for the work that she's doing on behalf of everybody in the city, making sure that we can have great summer events this year and throughout the year. Monroe PD was already recognized this evening, Mike and the Parks Department. It is difficult for our Parks Department staff to be working in that right-of-way. We've heard a number of times from people saying that drivers are not paying as much attention as they used to, and so it's been really helpful to have the police department staff there kind of assisting to make sure that our entire team stays safe. And then finally, if you haven't had an opportunity, there is some vertical work now going on at the Monroe, the campus site, our municipal campus site. So I was told today by Jordan that we will really begin to see things move along quickly now that the foundational work is all in place, and so walls will begin going up, and I'm not going to jinx it by giving any estimations of time at this point, just to say work is progressing. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Any questions on the city administrator report? All right, thank you. Next one's mayor's report, just a couple items. First, the comp plan, I attended the comp plan meeting that we had here last week. I was, I was here just long enough to welcome everybody. I have an injury on my left foot, and it was not comfortable for me to be hanging out here too long on that night. So there were a lot of people in this room, and they played a game. I wish I could have hung out a little bit longer. It looked like a SimCity meets Monopoly board game kind of thing. So it looks like each person was given a card and given a role to play. There was somebody that was supposed to be with the school district, the fire district, and a council member and a couple other roles, and somehow they then used their role that they were supposed to play to determine where population density and different uses should go. So it, they had maps, and it looked really exciting, and what can I say? They came in, these games came in boxes, they looked like pizza boxes with the City of Monroe logo on them. I thought that they had special order pizzas and was curious what the topping was that was City of Monroe pizza, but anyway, they're games instead. So kudos to the consultant team and also to our staff for doing that work. Attended the fundraiser on Saturday with Councilmember Walker, and to his point, there were a couple dozen dance routines that were done, and probably about 80% of them were from dance routines from India. The clothing was just really beautiful, just lots of beautiful vibrant colors. They, they had a lot of jewelry. One of the things that was really cool was they had, most all of them had bells, like, like bracelets, but bells on their feet, and they, the way they did their dances and everything, there was a lot of percussion on the stage. So they didn't have shoes on or anything like that, and they were, the music that was playing was through the speakers, somebody was singing through the speakers, but the dance, the bells, the percussion, the color, the movement, it was just really awesome to see them do those, those sorts of dances, those sorts of performances that I hadn't seen before. So I thought that was really cool. Had never met a council general, and it was neat having the council general from India come out from Seattle. He did mention it was a long way to come out, but I'm thankful that he came out. I was not aware, but they wanted me to speak. Apparently I said a few words from the cuff, so I guess that went okay. The, and then they also had us give awards to folks, which was also something that was not expected. But the goal there was to raise $10,000 for replacing the upholstery, and Connie Goss, I think is her name, mentioned that, that people doing the sort of dance have discovered Monroe, and I swear I heard somebody say that there was somebody, there was a dance group from Olympia that came up to dance in, at Wagner Hall this last weekend. So that facility now is getting booked a lot for Indian dance, and that's just really cool, and it was really cool that they decided to partner with the, with the Monroe Arts Council to try to bring in some money to replace the upholstery on the chairs. Last time I looked, they were up at like $7,800 to $8,000, and their goal was $10,000, so. Then on Sunday, I attended Pride. There were quite a few people at Pride, I'd say that there were probably several hundred or so people that were there. A lot of booths, a lot of performances, really appreciate staff for coming out, so to PD, so Chief Jolly and your team being there, and also Kate and your team being there. Just a lot of great things going on this last weekend. Looking to this weekend, I'll be attending Juneteenth, that's on Saturday. Feel free to come down, that is also at Sky River Park, and I'll be speaking sometime just after around noon, so. And then happy Father's Day to folks, happy belated Mother's Day, because I think we probably missed a couple meetings coming up to Mother's Day. I think that's all I have. Does anybody have any questions for me? Oh, yes, and I have a slide, and Jody keeps me on track, so Monroe this week is in your packets. Also, the civil service. week is in your packets. Also, the Civil Service Commission positions are a little different than the other boards and commissions. So I appointed, and that does not require confirmation of the Council, Richard Hess to the Civil Service Commission Physician Number Three. And this appointment will be effective June 27th, as shown on the screen. You can certainly go ahead and read that if you like. I think we are now fully staffed on the Civil Service Commission, on CHSAB, Planning Commission, Parks Advisory Board. How are we doing on Salary Commission? Do we have everybody on there? We don't have a quorum yet? Okay. So if you know of anybody that might want to apply for a border commission, we still are in need of one more person for Salary Commission. And then Ethics Board, I don't think we have a quorum there. I think we've only got two people appointed. But again, they only meet if something comes up. And there has not been a meeting in, I think there have only been a couple of meetings at the very beginning of my first tenure, in the first six months of when I was serving as Mayor. So certainly over the last eight years, there haven't been any meetings needed. So anyway, anybody that I miss, is there a second slide? All right. So if anybody else has any questions for me, we do have a need for an executive session. Okay, seeing no questions for me, we'll move on. We do have a need for an executive session. This is 13.1 Sale of Property Person, RCW 42.30, 110 Subsection 1, Subsection 10 C. We're going to do this for an initial 10 minutes. The time will start at 2:52 because it'll take me 30 seconds to say the rest of this. For those people that are watching online, for those people that are in the room, if we need to extend the executive session, Clerk Wykoff will make an announcement online and also in this room. There will be action to follow, if nothing else, to adjourn the meeting when the executive session finally ends. We are now in executive session for initial 10 minutes.
The executive session has been extended an additional 10 minutes. The executive session has been extended an additional 10 minutes. The executive session has been extended 10 minutes. The executive session has been extended five minutes. The executive session has been extended five minutes.
All right, we're back out of executive session. There's no further business this evening unless there's objection. We are adjourned. There being no objection, we are adjourned. Have a great week, everybody. Thank you.